It is seven o'clock and I will call the meeting computer. We have one member that's going to be split, but everyone else is either present or on the Zoom call. So, um, the first item on the agenda is to need a motion to add the mileage certificate to the agenda in five point oh category.
Is this state?
It's this annual state certification.
I make a motion, I make a motion to add discussion of the state certified certification of town mile, town road mileage to the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to add the mileage certificate to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, this part of the, uh, meeting is for public comment and it is basically to address anything that's not already on the agenda. The public wishes to put pie in the line. So if there's anyone in the room or in the Zoom call tomorrow. Uh, I got comment?
Go ahead Steve. I want to thank the, uh, fire department for back-to-back disasters that they responded to first on the thirtieth and then the horrific one on, uh, New Year's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure they appreciate that.
Yeah.
Don't sound like you only missed that one thing.
After actions meeting going on right now.
It was at least ten departments.
Yep.
Alright, I guess the next item on the agenda is, uh, minutes from the previous meeting. We should take a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve one minute of the development six week meeting. As it said.
Is there a second?
A second then we should do.
Okay. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of January or, uh, February sixteenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That was Steve.
I'm happy it wasn't here.
Yep. More attention, all, all others were in favor. Um, so the item we added to the agenda is mileage certificate. Which?
Has no change in mileage this year.
No, it's not.
We haven't had any changes in the number of years. Five years with no changes, um, that won't last.
I believe we all have to sign this.
Yes, you all have to sign it.
And sign.
Um, could you give me some identifying?
Yeah, there you go.
Motion to prove the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to give the annual mileage certificate for the twenty twenty-five calendar year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
As soon as everybody knows, we have to certify with the state in order to get our state, our state portion of federal highway funds.
This is how they adjust, how they adjust the amount we get.
Alright. Next item on our new business is, uh, golf course repair discussion. I'm assuming that either you Willie or Nick have information.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, Joe Turman today, actually. Uh, he's still working on getting numbers, uh, seed-wise, oh, seed-wise to redo the whole thing, takes more time. Or, or do it with, uh, Saratoga sod, um, still working on the prices for that. Uh, he wasn't quite ready for his meeting, uh, and I had asked him when, you know, he thought he could be ready maybe for the next meeting, but he's going on vacation. Uh, the twenty seventh, I think is our next meeting. Uh, he's gonna do, uh, like a spreadsheet type deal to give us a idea. And then he said they can come and meet with Nick and I before just to give us, you know, to talk to us and say, you know, what, what direction. Maybe we can try and go money-wise, uh, either way. So, uh, we should know by the next meeting definitely number, number wise. Um, so, you know, Jamie, Jamie were writing down, who obviously per, people is on there, so.
Yep.
Um, we, we, Joe, we'll get that ball rolling, so.
Question.
Um, I understand we don't have the figures or anything, but just so I have it framed in my head, um, my reflection is of all the damage on the actual greens around the holes from insects. Or whatever, and the idea is to rebuild the soil and then plant new or put on the sod is?
Well, price-wise, time-wise, there's two things that you're kind of looking at.
Yeah.
Uh, price-wise, you might spend a bit more putting sod down, but you're planning on it in two weeks. If you do, uh, total repair, seed, throwing it back in, you're looking at two months.
Right, and it's less certain because of the vagaries of the weather, but either way, wouldn't you be doing something to the soil to, um, refresh the soil that you're gonna put, yeah?
I mean, when, how long was the golf course put in? Forty?
Seventies?
Seventies, so most of fifty-seven years ago.
Seven?
They, I think, you know, it's just a group of guys that put the golf course together. By the time they got to that, that part, I mean, this end of the golf course, they kind of got things figured out. So Joe and I did a soil sample from the tee boxes and the, and the tees that we were, uh, greens that we wanted to repair.
Yeah.
He's still waiting for that to come back.
And I'll, and I'll note, those soil samples are also being done not just for the repairs, but also for the compliance because they're part of the, the requirements to get this on sound regulatory button, which is something we could drive people.
Right.
Well, I just, but I just, I just think this.
We measured all that.
Yes, I will get that over to Joe.
But I just, I just think that the soil is really, really important, whether you plant or you use sod, you know, for the long run, the soil is important. And that's the reason that I'm nervous about using chemicals because calcium soil requires all the bacteria and bugs and everything like that, so.
So what you're looking at right now basically is if we strip those greens.
Yeah.
Uh, you're gonna come, come in with like a sand base, but then you're gonna have a nice loom. It's not just bank.
Right.
Run, boom, it's gonna be, you know, uh, machine filtered.
So a really good medium, a really good base.
You need something there.
So that was, that was what I was hoping, that, that's fine, I just wanted to.
That's what I think you're seeing with the insects is that it's just gotten so.
War up.
It's war up, it's war up, it's, it's forty years of solid golf and it's time for it.
Well, I don't know, I don't know that anything, I mean, it's possible that some sort of renewal of that was done at some point, but I really don't know. I don't remember.
It's possible, but any, any renewal that happened, happened pre-Irene. And Irene, as you're aware, did a lot of polluting to that whole flood area. I mean, that park literally stunk after Irene went down through there. Smelled like everything, fuel oil, silt.
Hole two and hole three, you're still getting non-Irene levels, but they're getting plugged, you know, we, we found out there's more silt has been like the last couple of storms, silt beds come through. Which did help hole two.
There was a lot of that. That third one, that third hole takes it hard, more, more serious.
It's hard and, uh, Jared Woodard, yes sir, he did the best that he could with what he had for equipment. And even still, and you know, we've had Jim Henderson look at that as, we can't really change that hole that much either because they put that break in at the end of that parking lot. So in case something happens to the three thirteen bridge, it sends it over to Madison. So you're kind of in a close, close spot there, I mean, I don't know, but it, it's just anytime you're near the.
Well, it's fine, we were all gonna visit it and that's, that's where we are, we gotta live with that and we just gotta remember that when golf was invented in Scotland, they did not have many.
And also we, this is just a value-added use of some otherwise barely viable flood plain duty. That golf is the one, the only thing you can do on this and, um, certainly in a park, certainly with that much open space.
Can you refresh my memory about how many we're doing, Will?
Four.
Four.
Yeah. So we did with, with the money that we had, we put the four irrigation systems on holes that we're gonna take care of.
So they will have the irrigation systems and they will be refreshed and.
Yeah, so that's why, because a lot of that, uh, broken, uh, grubs that we had is because I struggled in six weeks to get water to every one of those holes, even though the valve box was there. Ended up, you know, trying to hand water them, and it was just too much. If we had water in them, it wouldn't have the grubs because it would be producing so much better, uh, underneath there in the soil.
Alright, well, I look forward to seeing the, uh, proposals and thank you for the background, I just need to get it fixed in my head, thank you, thank you very much.
So that'll be an ongoing discussion for the next couple of meetings anyway. Okay. Um, next item of business is in front of the fire officers.
Yes, we have the three fire chiefs up tonight. Uh, Chief Holly did for the obvious reasons, uh, because they have not been able to have the time to go and reconstitute the remaining, remainder of the fire officers. They've submitted for, uh, consideration like the statutory repositions of the slated chiefs.
Right.
Uh, so that wore out, they have on the agenda tonight to approve this.
And is this not a repetition of what we already have?
This is exactly what we already have.
I make a motion to approve of the twenty twenty-five elected officers, Chief Brian John Holly, First Assistant Eric Marco, Second Assistant Vince Thompson, motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Let me discuss.
Thanks. So, one of the things we talked about years ago when I came in, um, and still an issue is, right now, the fire chiefs are about the only department that is a yearly thing. Um, and we had talked years ago about it, changing that to a three-year position. Um, financially, it makes sense because in one year, you have a slate of officers come in. You put radios in their vehicles, everything else, it costs you a whole bunch of money to do that. Um, at the end of the year, they're gone because somebody else knocked in, um, or took over. It would make sense to move this to the, in my opinion, um, I've talked with several of the firemen and they agree, some don't, but I think it would make a big difference in. You get somebody in there, they've got an idea, they start to get that implemented and then all of a sudden it gets upended. Um, this would give some stability for a longer term.
I'm not, I'm not adverse, I'm not adverse to that at all, but, but I'm not gonna do it tonight. I mean, we have to put it on the agenda and have fires, I mean, I, I would think maybe two years, I don't know, three years. I like to hear, um, uh, you know, pros and cons or how they do elsewhere, I, I'm totally open to it in terms of what makes sense. I, I can, you know, I, I get your point about the, um, being able to do, do, have some continuity and stability in the leadership, but, um, it's. My, I don't know if this is something about what, how the town does it or how the fire department does it in terms of the election.
Well, and David, can you, uh, enlighten me on the, you, have you put any thought into the interaction between this and the way the company operates?
So, once, once the buildings are turned over, that takes a huge responsibility off the company. Because then they don't have that responsibility of maintaining the buildings and everything else, which is one of their biggest priorities right now, is maintaining those buildings. The leadership for the company and the department, which comes from their membership right now, um, right now, they're working very well for them. Um, and I think, like, for instance, most of the people over there are similar to us, they have a, the only one-year position is a secretary. Um, possibly the treasurer, but I think it's just secretary. Other than that, they're all three-year positions.
You mean the com-?
The company's officers.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we go back every year to do the chief.
And I, and I have no idea why, I don't know why, you know, it's just, it's statute.
Simple as that's way with.
Or history, I mean, I don't know, you know.
Yep, um, there's a lot of departments around that go, they do this, they do a one-year, if you've done really good, then you automatically get two years added on to it. So it becomes a three-year position. Um, if there's a lot of pushback by members, so on and so forth, when the select board doesn't feel you're doing a good position, good job in that position, then at the end of the year, maybe you're up.
Well, the fire commissioners have the authority to step in if there's something goes.
The fire commissioners have the authority to set the terms of, of office.
So, we may have to go through that separately from the select board.
I just wanted to bring it up, I, I heard from a few members, um, and, yeah, it's just something that I had brought to the board years ago and talked about it and it didn't go anywhere. And so, here I am bringing it up again.
I'm, I'm so glad you did this, I will note that these are the only one-year terms of the appointed officials except for the energy coordinator position, which is a power loss position that I hold. And like, and just chalk to the energy committee, but, so it's ultimately the only one-year position in the government, um, of, of the appointed official, they're elected officials, but are one-year terms, obviously. But.
We can bring it up at the next meeting and discuss it or whatever, I just, I wanted to put it on the table tonight and have everybody thinking about it.
It's just that, I think with all the budget things going on, I would rather be doing the budget things because we're not gonna take action against this or put something to the town's.
Like you said, we can do another meeting.
I mean, I would.
Let's have this conversation after town meeting.
I mean, but, but, but this is not to forget it because I think it's a really, it's a really useful subject, um.
And I think it weighs, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I, and it would be interesting to me to know why, why, you know, what, you know, why, and, and, um. And I also think that, that along, you know, like if, if we were doing something like you said, you have one year and then if you do any good job, it goes to three years or whatever, we need to have really clearly spelled out criteria as to what is a good job or not a good job. You know, just along with our ten, our practice of trying to raise the level of clarity and professionalism and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yep, I just wanted to get it out there and on the table.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I think that in general, I guess I would have thought that this was coming from what the fire department wanted to do and that's why it was yearly. But I don't know, you know, so.
Man, it's before I got over.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know.
I've been there thirty-five years.
But you know, hey, what, you know, we don't know where it came from, but we still can change it, so, you know, it's like, because, because things have to evolve. So I think that's a really good point and I think that might help to, um, you know, uh, resolve some of the issues, particularly as you say, when you're under the responsibility for the buildings. If, um, you can have more stability in the officers, you can really, um, develop other capacities in a more fulfilling way.
Yep.
Interesting.
Okay, so the motion was made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn.
Yeah.
And, uh, to approve the, uh, slate of officers, Chief Brian J. Holly, First Assistant Eric Marco, Second Assistant Vince Thompson. To the, uh, twenty twenty-five leadership of the fire department. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next on the agenda is five point three, reappraisal award.
Okay, and this ties in with, we got our CLA letter on Friday. So, um, the reappraisal award, we, we were ready to award this in November and then a second chance on dinner theme, I'll work that day. And I have been trying to get the proposal out of that second bidder ever since and, and was unsuccessful at doing so. So, at this point, I am throwing in towel and saying we can't wait any longer to get on the, the calendar, otherwise we're gonna be waiting until February to get a reappraisal. Yeah, we gotta get this, we gotta get this on the board. We gave the alternative bidder, bidder plenty of time, um, and plenty of communication and support on that. Um, so finding that, we have the one bid that was in your, your bid packet, our proposal, your, your agenda packet. You'll find the cost, uh, figure on page three. And that this is from the New and Limousine Resources Center in Nemrick. So, for the award, it will be awarded as a sole contract, finding of alternative, um, proposals.
Does someone want to make the motion to approve that and look more?
I don't have the dog breathing, so.
One fifty-six, hundred sixty, hundred sixty thousand. Steven?
Yeah.
Yep.
And do we have that in our, our reappraisal line or will we have that?
We, we have approximately, we have approximately a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in the reappraisal fund, um, and it, and it will be well over this, so we get about twelve thousand dollars a year.
And that's a capital, that's a capital reserve right in the debt, I bet.
Yes, and that's, that's funded by the state with a per parcel fee, our transfer.
Okay.
So, uh, we know that that revenue is extremely stable in the future. And we know that we are one of, in almost fifty percent of towns that are in the same boat with the reappraisal. They're out five years for a reason.
Okay, so I, um, make a motion to award reappraisal of the Grand List of Town Arlington to Nemrick. For an amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to be paid for from the reappraisal capital reserve line, which will have sufficient funds at the time it's needed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to approve the reappraisal award to, to name the company.
You wouldn't list them?
Nemrick, uh, for a total amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Wait, wait, um, I just wanna make a note for the public that, um, you may or may not have noticed that there's something called the full common level appraisal. That can affect especially your education property tax rate and the fact that our appraisal values has not kept up with the, the market values, has been penalizing the town. And it's not our fault, it's just the way things are and having to be appraised or this won't come into effect until next year, but having.
It'll be a couple of years actually.
Couple of years, okay, so it's gonna be a couple of years, but the idea is that we will get caught up and we will no longer be being penalized for being behind the market value. And I also want to say that, I don't know if it's possible, but I would, I would like to send a letter to different parts of state government protesting the fact that we're being penalized for things that are absolutely beyond our control and that is so unfair, that it's just an accident of fate, that some towns happen to get reappraisals and the others haven't been able to get it done. I mean, that is like the definition of unfair, so I don't know.
People are trying stupid money and sight unseen on houses that worth nearly as much.
But, but it's, but it's not just, i- i- it's, it's, it's even aside, aside from that, it's that there, the, the appraisers are so backed up that we can't get it appraised. We couldn't get it then, there's only a handful of them and they're all ready, so this is like, we're, we would have been ready to get it appraised before and you can't get anybody. And so, um, I just think this is just yet another aspect of, especially the school funding system, because it doesn't affect the town as much, that is, um, demonstrably unfair, so.
I will note, I am, I'm, having watched and follow a lot of the LCP documentation on this, the state is taking this seriously, there was a study done on ripping this appraisal system down to the studs and rebuilding it. Um, that study would do at the end of December and I have not had a chance to go look for it. Uh, but we do expect that if that study is not out right now, it will be out eminently or impotently.
No, see, but, but, um, that's fine, that's fine.
But this, that'll tell us here.
No, what they need to do is to, to suspend the penalty for the duration, that's what they need to do. Because all it does now is redistribute money from towns that happen to have up-to-date appraisals, from towns that are not up-to-date to towns that are. And that makes no sense, so they, so studying is very nice, but they need to suspend this penalty. Alright, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So, uh, I'm gonna call the motion, all those in favor of the motion to award the presence of Nemrick at a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar, please signify by saying aye.
Alright. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your input, especially Steve.
Yes, Steve. Steve McCaffrey, I just want to make two comments about the contract. On page four, under section four, it says the Nemrick staff will have the capability to access the assessor's computer system remotely, either via cloud. Um, or the Nemrick client unattended access. What are we doing to protect our data and are they gonna be providing like a cybersecurity and what do they have access to? That's question one. Question number two, on page five, indemnification. Please read the first sentence to me.
The contractor shall and hereby agree to indemnify, save harmless and defend the town of Franklin, town or Franklin from the payment of any sum of money to any person.
Who is Franklin? Who is the town of Franklin?
No, town or Franklin, isn't Franklin part of the, uh, didn't I just read that?
Town of Franklin.
Town or Franklin.
Or. Shouldn't it be the town of Arlington?
No, isn't that? No, no, I was gonna say the, the Marshall and Swift data, I was thinking that it was Franklin for some reason, okay, you are right on that then Steve, for sure.
Yeah, we can.
I read that as if it was the.
Yeah, we can make the motion to, to require this be, be edited.
Edit it to reflect our own.
Yeah.
So that's first.
And that Heinzberg.
Yeah, not Heinzberg?
It was Heinzberg in large.
Yes, okay. So the other one, what are there, are they gonna be providing cybersecurity insurance? Because they're gonna be looking at our data from wherever and, you know, just wanna know.
I, I think Nemrick's doing the work and we use Nemrick, which is a cloud-based system, so there's some overlap there already between the company.
But do we already have, um, this is a separate contract, is a, um, reference or should there be something? And the only reason why I ask.
There may need to be, I mean, that would need to go to legal and compliance.
Yeah.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good point, um, I think we do work with them all the time, but Steve's right, I don't believe they work with the listeners of information, um, so I, I wanna award this contract, but if Nick could, if Nick could.
I'll see questions on, I'll see answers on this from, uh, the principal on this side.
Yeah.
As well as having them edit this final, this tag over. Spend a dollar every time.
Spend a thousand Franklin to build that. That's the way to get our, um, um, that.
I only wanted to.
I pulled up my Santa home.
Yeah.
That's the way to get the money back Cynthia.
There you go.
Let them pay. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, do we want to award it conditional on certain information coming back to us or just do it for now?
I, I would like to go ahead and award it to get it on the schedule, but I'd like to get clarification about what protections are in place.
I will, I will contact them and get any answers.
I mean, they, they do this all the time, they do this all the time, and so I think there are systems, but we need clarification about that and be enabled, you know, I mean, whoever, um, just, 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 let's just clarify that.
Yeah, we'll make sure that.
Deal with it for sure.
Yeah.
I just had to write two contracts today that people want to have access into our electronic health record and I have to get it approved by the state.
Oh yeah, so you're kind of sensitive, yeah.
So, all those in favor of awarding Nemrick the contract for a hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, with questions, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
There's, there's a signature page on that contract.
I don't have it.
I don't.
Uh, it's the one that had the, that's sticking up, yeah, it's on back, that's the one that says, that says all the way at the back.
Just the bottom one.
Yes, back, back.
Well, do we want to sign that once we get the question that the contract changed and then just docu-sign it to us?
Uh, yes, we will, we'll, we'll make it work here.
Yeah, we don't want to sign it as it is existing.
Yeah, we'll get, I'll get the final version and get it back, guys.
I'm gonna set that over beside this stuff. Alright, thank you Matt, that's a good point. Um, five point four is the town meeting report.
Hey.
And you have that up on, or you're gonna have that up on screen momentarily?
I'm gonna, we have a couple of different pieces for this.
Okay.
So, so one is the draft warning, the draft warning cannot be approved tonight because we're filled before the deadline.
Right.
Um, so that will have to be done at the next meeting before, but it, but it has to be on the next statutory deadline, most later.
Right.
So, um, I'm gonna share that, the, and then we, we have the, the address, the town, the select board report. That was in your board packets, that's for any feedback of the board speaking, uh, directly to the taxpayers and, and then we'll, we'll get to the budget after, like, later in the meeting, that whole business. The, I don't think you guys particularly ever approve the postcard that goes, goes out, that is a boilerplate piece of paper, um, that Rod and I have worked with together. So, my plan for this is we're gonna look at three potential formats for the. So, my plan for this is we're gonna look at three potential formats for the warning and then we're going to move to the select board report and then we can, we can, we can go onto the other item, the bridge and then we'll come back to the budget. So, uh, I'm going to shoot, so to to brief on the warning, last year we looked at a couple of different options for how we present the warning and how we actually vote on the budget. Mr. Keelen had some really astute, um observations on the fact that we, we vote on a lot of different articles and it really does wash out the, the clarity uh and the why we're here of the um, of the warning itself and the voting itself. We're voting on, on up to forty articles, um, sometimes more than forty articles, but I will share the I'll, I'll share the, the one that's in the current format and then we, then we will look at the one that's in the the, what I'm calling semi-consolidated format and then we'll look at the one that's in the fully consolidated format. That has, so working from the most voted items to the least voted items. Um, so, this is the morning, um, so we we have, um, we have our dates, all dates are updated, um, but you'll see as we go through this. One, we have our Australian ballot article that wasn't, that we previously discussed, that article five is from the floor. There is.
What?
The, the vote to move to the Australian ballot for budgets. That's, that's the Tim Williams article.
Would be in, on.
On our floor. Not by Australian ballot to go to Australian ballot.
Shouldn't it say for next year?
Uh.
Because we're not, because it doesn't mean.
Should be to take effect first in.
So, we can say that, this is the, the specific statutory language that is, is what it tells us to use for this art. We can add on the end because it's, there's some wiggle room, what is lately.
Brackets to take effect.
Yeah, we can, we can say, cause it needs to be substantially similar, this language, so we could, we could say at the end to take effect in, in a future budget year if approved, um, something like that. Um, is that, is there update from the board to do that or is there?
I, I think it should make it, it has to clarify, I mean, cause you're not gonna, if there's a positive vote, it's not gonna go in effect the next day, you know, because we're doing a budget in the town meeting, right? You know, it's for future years. I think it should make that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a note out, I'm not gonna make a note in the document right here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it, uh, I'm gonna implement it on the, the version you guys want.
Right, but and I, it shouldn't say for some future year, it should say some next.
Following year.
Yeah.
Or for the following year.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the rest of this has, we, we updated the dates for when taxes are due, um, specifically within the week. Um, one, I, I find here that this one uh truck adjustment is in the capital plan in the budgets, something I've discussed, but the only CRF adjustment in the current morning. Um, and it's reflected in all versions. Um, moving down, we have we have a placeholder article for any final, any special allocation article. We will strip this out and reduce the number if we decide not to, not to do that based on where the budget is. When, as I'll get to later, we do not have our final actuals in yet with our final cash on hand that will be able to tell us this tonight. So, I have a placeholder in this, uh, which we will u- update at our next meeting when we have all of our information, when we can legally pass the warning. Um, now.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't understand, um, where is there already a capital reserve line for those two uses or are you putting them in an existing line or where, I don't understand.
This is the language exactly from last year, it is just a placeholder article, it's where the future, if we are going to allocate a surplus item would sit.
Like if we were gonna put any surplus into Bennett Crossing or into paving or whatever.
Yes, this is, this is the placeholder article, it's, it's reflected in all three versions.
Okay.
Um, now, one important thing, we got, we did get a petition from the library to increase their allocation by uh, it, it's like two thousand and two hundred and fifty dollars, um, something like that, I have it down here.
It's in the budget.
It was twenty-three fifty, um, so that, that is in, that reflected in all of them, it's been petitioned. Um, moving down, you see, all of the articles are broken out, we have our signature lines, that is it. Um, thirty-five articles total on the, the, the vote on absolutely every item version of this. I will now share a, a vote on slightly less things version of this. Um, which is exactly the same as um a version that I showed you guys last year, just with this year's information. Um, this is what I'm calling the semi-consolidated version. Um, and, okay, so this version consolidates.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Yes, I, I, I'm, I wasn't, you, you didn't like it last year.
No, no, no. What's the difference here?
Okay, the difference here is, this art, so this is twenty articles instead of thirty-five articles, it consolidates all of the, the um.
Into one article?
The, the small, importantly, it is not the library, it is the library and the rescue squad.
Most of them are up.
All under five thousand dollars. Um, art, articles into a single art. Um, that is the, okay, people should be able to vote individually on major allocations, particularly the library when they're having an increase. Uh, particularly the rescue squad that, that had an increase last year. Uh, these large line items standalone of these small social services line items get consolidated in twenty, that takes our number of voted articles from thirty-five to twenty. And, and that is the only difference between the previous version and this, other than the change in the number. Um, I will move over to the, the most consolidated, um, what I'm calling.
And, and these are all things that are gonna be on the ballot.
Yes.
For our Australian ballot.
Yes, all of these, it's simply, are you voting on thirty-five items or are you voting on, on twenty items? With, with one being one made law. Um, this moves it from twenty to fifteen items. And it does so by moving, just like we moved the social services allocations into one article, sorry. Um, we move the, the highway um, all of the highway CRF article into one big highway CRF article that says sixty thousand of trucks, fifteen thousand excavators, thirty thousand bridges, et cetera. Uh, that takes it from twenty articles down to fifteen articles. So, they, this is, this would seek to address a, the the objection to voting on across like three pages long where the text, um, down to, this should take it to um, for one item. So, all of these are, are probably the exact same content. But it's just three different ways to vote by consolidating them in a, in three different formats. Um, and it's exactly what you've looked at last year in some flavor or another, so if, so this is the do you have any different opinions than last year where you decided the vote on everything up, up item is the way to go? And, and that was the year where we voted on four here.
Any questions or problems?
Well, I would like to understand, um, if we, it, arguments for and against, I assume the arguments for some degree of consolidation is you don't have four pages of items to vote on. Um, and so it's like, I don't know, convenience or time voting, not that anybody has to go through all of them if they don't want to.
If you can.
I, but I just, I just feel that, that, you know, so I can see the economy of that and the consolidations offered makes sense, but on the other side we're restricting voters' choices.
Right.
I don't believe in doing that unless I have to, and I don't see that I have to.
If you're consolidating everything under five thousand into one specific art- article, are you still voting on each specific?
No. And, and like, what if somebody supports the highway truck, but they don't support something else? I just think, I just, I just think you, you have less accountability, less choice, less power for the voters and I don't see that you gain that much. You may be printing costs, printing all the the, the ballots, I understand, you know, going through and making, filling everything in can be tedious. But you don't have to vote on those things at all if you don't want to, if you just wanna vote on the things you care about, you can leave the rest of it.
Still gonna read through it, it's still gonna be the same amount.
Ultimately, it's still the same amount of time to print, I actually really value that the ability to get information of, okay, which of our equipment lines is, is more popular? Because it's, it yields valuable information, where do the voters see?
I don't like booking the highway stuff into one.
I don't think we're gaining anything, I really don't, I really don't.
And.
I, I agree.
I understand the thought process.
I understand the efficiency, the economy, but, but that's, voting is not an efficient process, you know, accountability is not efficient. You have to allow for people to make choices and gather information and, and I think that um, I think it would be better to stay with what, what we have, I'm, I'm open to somebody else's counterargument, but.
I don't think. I prefer the granularity of the way it exists today, it also eliminates question around any individual item, right? If they were lumped together, there could become a gray area or question when they're not lumped together. There's no question, right? It was very granular and let's face it, it's two extra minutes to fill in those circles and you're voting, I'm sure that people can find two minutes in their day to be a little more granular and specific.
Yeah.
You don't have to vote on them anyway.
That's right, and but, but really going along with what Matt says, I also think that, um, I think that we wanna make it very clear that we're not trying to slide anything through, you know, or, or lessen voters' choices, we are putting it out before them. Um, because you know, you, you know, they could think, well, you stuck this in with all this other stuff, could just slide, yeah, exactly, exactly. And, and we wouldn't be, it's the same stuff we would have done, but it couldn't look like that, so I just would rather not do that.
Or if you lumped them all together and say there was one item that people just thought.
Got a hot button.
Way too much.
Then the whole thing goes down.
Then the whole thing goes down, you get nothing for any of it. And that would be a disaster.
That's right, so I, I just think it's better, um, to stay.
I, I, I hear a sense of the board on this that it's not popular with anyone. I'm gonna throw these into my archives and not ever think about these consolidated versions again. And honestly, I'm, I'm convinced enough that unless voters come to us and, and, um.
Well, I understand why Mr. Keelen said that.
I understand his point, but is the, is the inconvenience justified by the Russian.
Particularly if that's all it is, and I don't know, I don't remember him saying anything else, because you don't even have to vote on those, you know, if you gotta go. You know, you got a care, you just vote on key ones and, you know, so I, I just don't, I don't, I don't, I don't buy it.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything. Yeah, absolutely, so anyway.
But thank you for proposing it, cause.
It was worth the discussion.
It was worth the discussion, it was definitely something that Robin thinks about, um, but I wanted to put it up. Um, so, moving, so we got that, we're good to go, um, so now we're gonna review the the report draft and, and then.
Questions, Cynthia, go ahead.
Um, so, so Nick, I did have some thoughts about the report and I wasn't sure what our timeframe is on this.
So, what I'd like to do is have a votable version of this at the next regular select board meeting, which is the one on the twenty-seventh, when we're gonna go in, approve the final warning.
Okay.
So, like, we have another meeting after that, if there are leaks or something like that, I goes, et cetera, but like, I'm telling all of the social services appropriate appropriations people, let's get it to, get it here by the end of the month. So that we're not rushing around, but I do wanna make, I wanted to give you the first draft you guys. And then we can, we can take it home, think about it, if we have any biting things that when you redraft now and send you guys a full other draft. That this would be a good time to.
Well, I thought that, I thought that I would, um, take an effort to make some changes, I can send back to you or to the whole board. I mean, one of the key things is that, I, I don't think it was just regulatory compliance, I think we were making strategic investments this past year.
I like that part.
And going forward, so keep the regulatory compliance, so that's really important. But I think when you read the rest of it, all the ARPA stuff and everything, that's all strategic investment.
I love that word.
Okay, good, good. So that, so that is one part, um, the other thing that I wondered is if somehow, um, when we get down to the bottom when we're talking about the budget, and of course the budget isn't finalized yet, but once we finalize, if we could get something characterizing the budget and possible tax rate into this. Because we always talk about how important it is to have some kind of text describing the budget and usually we have the numbers. And this is something that people might be reading, I, and I wonder if we could get it in there. And I'd also like to say that, that although I really were pretty much trying to do the bare minimum, we're not doing anything to new, new I think to, to, um, to hopefully provide the in- increases in pay to the staff that weren't done last year is, um, a- another kind of investment, it's an investment in community capital. And so that's actually really, really important.
I like that, that raising in this, um, I think all three of these are really good about, good items to add.
Okay, so I might, I might do another draft, but I think you can think about it too and, and, um.
Yeah, you and I can think each.
Yeah, but I think, but I think this, this is very good and I think you, you covered most of the, the important things, but that's just me, I don't know what you guys.
So I have one thing here.
Yeah.
We had several questions come up at town meeting last year that we did not have answers for. And I think they're in the record, so I think we should answer those and maybe this is a place for them.
I was also thinking in the, uh, let's see, second to the last paragraph there where we talk about the budget and um, you know, the tax rate, healthcare costs, it may be interesting and, and Cynthia, this kinda goes along a little bit to what I think you were just describing. It would be helpful if we could call out to our constituents that, you know, of the, the budget thirty percent is town operations. Twenty percent, I'm just pulling these numbers because I haven't actually calculated it. Um, you know, payroll appropriations accounts for X percentage of the budget. Just so that the taxpayers can really get a good idea um, as they vote, right, that they're voting for the town budget and that accounts for a certain percentage of that tax rate, right? And if I approve all of the appropriations, all of those appropriations account to a certain percentage of the tax rate. So that it's a little bit more transparent rather than just lumped together, obviously the final tax rate lumped together, we know, obviously it could change if something was voted down. But to really just maybe call out the percentages so that people have a little bit more clearer understanding, if you don't have if you don't have the numbers in your head and you look at the budget and you can kinda calculate that relatively quickly. It might be a little complicated for a lot of people and to call that out in a simple manner may be helpful.
I think that's, I think that's really good, I mean, I would think that the staff salaries and the capital reserve are the biggest chunks. And so that people would then know. Yeah, when you're paying the municipal property tax rate, this is what you're paying for.
I, it's gonna be simplest, this is one line, is, it is, of the budget X are presented our payroll, X percent are materials, Y percent are, are, um, are appropriations and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we, and, and then some mislays kind of work. Um, I was thinking about including in the budget analysis a graph to this effect, we've never really done any like pie charts and stuff like that in the budgets. And this might be a year where we throw a pie chart or two or something analogous to that into the budget that helps show this as well. Um, we haven't done that, I would, I think it's probably good to, we don't wanna over indulge in that and get, and have. But one picture, even if it's one picture, it might be really helpful.
No, I think that could be really good, I think that could be very helpful because it isn't, I mean, what Matt said is good, the percentages, but the pie chart is a visual representation and you can see by how big the the pie.
I agree with that.
So I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, so, um, so, yeah, I will include that, I will probably include that at the like, I'm, my current vision of the town report is, is a great, one little new section of just like no more than two pages worth of, like, our produced analysis, not coming from an auditor that like last year. And it's not gobbledygook of pages and pages of budget, it is analysis. analysis. It is breakdowns that end a completely digestible, the simplest way we can not overdoing it. Uh, with the kind of analysis that someone who really is a budget nerd wants to get into, they can come and come and we can breeze that on the side. It doesn't have to go over the top. But we need something. Because zero is not the correct amount of pie charts in this document.
You kind of touched on that at the beginning of last year, Steve, I think, with a balance sheet of sort or an asset and liabilities sheet.
So that comes in in the auditor.
Without this being going across the whole thing.
Yeah.
And what about what Jamie was saying? Because I have absolutely no recollection of those questions that we didn't have the answers to. So so okay, but I, but I, but I mean, we could even have something at the end of this report saying, at last year's town report, these are the questions and these are our answers.
To keep, to keep, to keeping it simple, I think you're gonna answer a lot of the questions.
Yeah, well, and we know if if we, there is one easy, one thing that that we were asked about was uh, the making all of our agenda materials like fully available online. That was something that we did. That was something that was requested at town meeting last year. And that was the one thing that stuck out to me. Uh, that was something we needed to change. We changed immediately. We became more transparent by doing so. And we got out ahead of what would end up being the the changes in standard meetings all made from here.
I believe we got asked about the bridge, Benedict Bridge as well.
Yeah. And we talked about that.
Now we have answers for that.
And then we were asked about that thing crossing bridge.
Specifically.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. We have, that was out, that very article to, um, what's on? And oh, that was twenty-three. Um, so, yeah, that so it, yeah, definitely was something that was brought up, not this, not last year, but it was in the minutes of the previous year. We never gave much of an update last year either. So, um, but certainly something we should definitely include. And
And if the, and if for any reason we don't include it in this report, we can make a point of addressing it at town meeting itself.
One thing that I have not touched yet is the inserting of the minutes of last year's meeting in the town report. I have not looked at those since then, so I will, when I get those from Robin, I'll go through those, pull out any, any notable questions. Um, and if we can easily incorporate them into this, we can, um, we'd either, we'd either have it as a we were asked the following questions at town meeting, here's the answer on one line. Uh, or we can incorporate it in the text as we move along and say, hey, responding to a question last year's town meeting, here's the answer. Oh, we got and address that on a topical basis when we are in the administrative section, we are talking about the administrative questions. Uh, either of these is a viable option. We can look at it.
But look, look and see what what
Yeah, I want to get.
The other thing that that I just wondered is if if my understanding is that right now we are not having any budget item for law enforcement? Because we could not come to an agreement with the sheriff's department and the state police doesn't have capacity to serve us. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
And I didn't know if that was something we should recognize in the report, because I would wonder if we wouldn't get questions about it. I don't, I haven't gotten complaints about speeding, but that tends to be the thing that really triggers people wanting more patrols. So, um, you know, so I just didn't know if we should be proactive and mention it in the report. Or we can always address it on the floor. We can get those signs and all that kind of stuff, but I just wanted to raise that.
Yeah, that sounds like a question that may, we couldn't address it in years, but I think it almost is like throwing on other public agencies under the bus by by trying to bring it up and saying that we couldn't come to terms.
Well, we don't have to say that. We just, um, we can just say well, I don't know. I just think it's something that some people are gonna get.
We do have two requests about speeding.
Yeah.
One on Water Street right down there. And one further down three thirty.
Yeah, and I think we had the speed signs out um at some point.
We have two speed studies, and that's something we, when we get.
I don't see how it's throwing another public agency under the bus to say exactly what happened.
Well, in this case, it's more, it's more of a story of okay, the complaints that we have that are registered here on on speeding are are something that we are actively working to address. We are, we're going to be agending at some point in the next month or so, probably in February.
Agending, agending. You cannot use that as a verb. That is not a verb.
I have been implying that for way too long.
I'm gonna give you a grammar ticket. I'm giving you a grammar ticket. Okay.
The Oxford English Dictionary.
Uh, I'm sorry for my, my, uh, far too long.
Okay, so we want, so so but we're
We are due to 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 discuss the three thirteen speeding matter in February. Um, I've been hoping to find some administrative time to, or some like meeting time to get this on the agenda, but we haven't time in the last month or so. Uh, so I'm thinking like the first meeting in February would be a good time to come back, bring it, address that speeding issue.
Okay.
Get, get prepared for whatever, or if the transit is gonna be on that, and then we can think about it.
That's good. I like that.
So, um, so it sounds like
I just think that's something that's gonna come up, that's all.
And I think it's certainly something that when you go to zero, you always get questions. Um, so so it sounds like we have a plan of, I'm gonna work on on getting some pieces included, Cynthia, I'll communicate on this. Um, and I'll have a draft for you that incorporates as much of this as we can at the next meeting.
Excellent.
All right. Yeah, Steve, go ahead. Observation, reading at the bottom of the first page there, that very last that says, this year's budget has few novel or interesting new projects. It's the bare minimum needed to keep the town moving, pay and provide benefits to our staff, and just have enough cash on hand to get by. And to me, that sounds like we're in dire straits. And if you're, and this is the first time I've heard about not trying to contract with either one of the law enforcement agencies, I think you've got to push things right up front to take, to cut every, cut to the chase. Tell the people, because if they find out similar to uh, what we were just talking about, the appropriations um, in there, oh, what are they trying to push through? You know, maybe in two years, they're pushing something through. I think the more you're honest and open, um, because someone may make a a um, a floor challenge and say, how much did we pay the last two years? We want to add X amount of dollars and then forcing your hand to do something. And and then here also to include um, working on employees so that next year they're gonna be paying a percentage of their healthcare. The more you can push to a lay townspeople's I I won't say period, but their ideas or misgivings, the better off.
I think that's, I think that paragraph, um, we can, we work.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know this is a rough draft.
Well, but I appreciate your, I appreciate your input.
Okay, so that's the last point of that.
Do you have the question? Or cover?
Okay. Cover bridge, correct?
Yeah, next item is six point one, cover bridge with patters, and you have an RFP.
We have an RFP. Uh, it is a, it is a a draft RFP that um, spent my, my P P for it on. It was 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 actually probable upon for an RFP, yes, as far as they go. Um, so as you see, I have a very long list of very specific wood stuff, um, to, that is to be replaced. That is all being pulled out of the bridge inspection. Is, we have the deck, that was the big piece we know about. Um, we have a floor beam, that was the other big piece we previously talked about. Something we didn't get into a lot of detail on when we last discussed this was this item of, of lateral bracing uh, with the refurbishment of the boards of the portal that are where the truck hit them, where where they were gouged. This is replacing those vertical boards that I just predicted. As as well as, there's a couple of of these miscellaneous structural components, like this, uh, east side top board, cross bracing. Um, it does leave one one bit vague, and that is address the upstream racking of the bridge. This gives a little bit of leeway to how they intend on addressing this slight twisting or leaning of the bridge.
It got knocked out of square.
Yeah.
So instead of being perpendicular and level, it's knocked out.
See that.
Three ball, the entire bridge.
Yeah.
The standing structure part of the bridge is racked.
But why didn't, why wasn't this addressed when we were doing the post diarrhea care? It is just
I don't know if that got noticed, or it could have been something.
This is new.
This is new in the last three to five years.
Okay.
It was not noted in the previous report.
Okay, so they noticed it now.
And typically, like, this is still in the, like, not that bad, but we want to get out ahead of it. If we're already carrying the word apart, let's fix the lean. Um, let's repair this knee bracing, which probably will be tricky. As you see, we have the option of, of, the plan is, as opposed is is pull up the existing o- o- boards and replace the existing o- o- boards. We have an option built in to replace them. It might be cheaper and less labor intensive to just replace the boards. So we live that, we leave that in, that in at the, at the bidder's discretion as note.
Why? What what is the condition of the boards?
They were just put down.
Then why won't we replace them?
Uh, it may be less labor intensive to do so. Okay, I gotta go press harder.
So the way they were put down, they may not come back up very easily.
Oh, it's gonna be splinter or whatever.
Crack, break, the lags that they put down in there.
And we have to, we have to take them up because we're
Because we're placing everything underneath it, right?
Yeah. What they're, the experience here is coming in.
With any luck, there'd be some sort of ingenuity to get them up, but
Like they are, they should have a number of light years left on them.
Could we do something else with them after we get them? Well, I guess it depends on the condition.
Yeah.
Huh. I'd like to know what a trundle is, but maybe that's
I can show you on this, if I flip over to my
A what?
It's an upper pin.
An upper pin?
There's photos of what is to be replaced in the appendix.
That's okay. I can look at them at my leisure.
But, yeah, so they, these are the pieces.
The bridge takes an awful pounding.
It does take an awful pounding. Um, and I know what you've got, the painting portion as a
Yeah, as a
Option. No matter what, it needs to be painted after all this work is done.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, I don't know if you want to leave it as an option or
Hang me up there.
Put it in. They're gonna have the staging, they're gonna have everything else there to keep everything out of the river wall, working on it.
Yeah.
Do the painting right then and there. They can hire a contractor to come in as part of their bill.
Okay, so I
Um, I just don't think this should be an option.
I mean, this is like, let's get the bridge, let's get the bridge.
You know, squared up, trued up, because we don't know how long Benedict is gonna be. And you want this available for the summer as soon as possible.
Okay, so it sounds like the sensible board is change that to not be an option.
Do we need to say anything about subcontracting? Like, they can figure that out.
It just needs to be a part of their
They can figure that out.
That's, that's part of it, they're covered under there.
You know, I just don't want somebody to say, well, I don't do paintings or I'm not gonna bid, you know.
It's a, you go find a painter and you, and you hire them.
Okay, okay.
As, and you say, it's gonna cost X amount.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah, I will remove the option to that. Um, and then we have this collective catchall that says that, that says everything and address everything in the bridge inspection. It, it just is a, okay, it avoids the, while this tiny board was damaged that we do need to replace. Check the report if it does, if it's labeled, if it's listed in the report, it should be done. Um, that's why we include the report as the, as part of the appendix. But we want brings it to the assets inspection.
And how, um, where is the funding for, paying for this gonna come?
The CRF bridges that
The bridges, capital reserve from bridges. That's fine, that's fine.
And it's there, that's why it's a exclusive local, uh, funding in the funding box.
And there's no, um, there's no category for repair and restoring bridges? In terms of state funding?
Not that would give us priority in the timeline of the meeting.
Okay.
Like, we could put this out into a, a standard state structures grant.
No, no, I, I wanna go.
Then we're delayed for four months.
No, I wanna go ahead. And we probably save money by not going to the state stuff, so
Yeah.
You know, so I
Only because of the expedited process.
Yeah, yeah.
Longer.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. No, I don't wanna do that.
This gets a bidding this week.
Right.
Not, not in May at the earliest. Which uh, yeah, so that
So there's one comment in there that says optional pricing for services, to go down a little bit further. Uh, all inclusive, um, right at the top, associated with the period of rigid, optional components. And you have painting.
Yeah.
So just make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just an all the way down, true.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate these, they call out. Okay, so wait. So conditional on these painting adjustments being implemented. Um, are there any other, is there any other feedback on this RFP?
No, I looked through it and I looked through the report. Everything else is pretty well identified.
I, I had never read a bridge inspection before with this much detail. It was really it, I, I found a lot of stuff that we had talked about, for instance, but in there. So a couple of links I didn't take them out of that.
And who did that report?
The state.
State.
Was it, was it a special expert in these things?
The state bridge inspectors who inspect all bridges. They, that's all they do. It was
No, I know, it just said, it's just that it's interesting because sometimes they're more thorough than others. It sounds like
It is pretty thorough.
No, this time it was thorough.
This was extremely thorough uh, thing. I mean, we were there for a lot of this thing, and it took them like three-ish hours to take the measurements they needed to.
There were two people and they were going back and forth and back and forth and measuring and leveling and unfortunately, we happened to be there at the same time and got a lot of answers.
That's what it brings. That's great.
No, that was
It's nice to have
It was one of the most productive meetings I've had in my entire career, frankly, because of how knowledgeable these people were.
That's great.
So so we do need a motion to authorize this RFP with the adjustments as discussed.
I make a motion to authorize the release of the RFPs that covers bridge repairs, conditional on adjustments as discussed. Motion for this.
Second pass.
Motion, everybody, Cynthia and Cynthia and Jamie, please, the uh, edited version of the, uh, RFP for the coverage of the repair. Those in favor, signature by Shane White.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Hey.
Now we're onto the budget.
Back to the budget.
Um, I'm assuming you're gonna screen share.
I'm, I'm pulled back to the screen share. Um, there aren't a whole lot of adjustments to this budget, because frankly
They don't have year end numbers.
We don't have our year end numbers. We'll have them at the next meeting. We do have the we do, I did re-split the, um, the, our uh, release split in into the highway department and cleaned up some numbers there as requested. And then I did put the actuals that we didn't have, the up to December first, uh, actuals implemented in that, that non-final actuals column, uh, as well as as implemented a couple of little, those weeks like that, uh, library appropriation was implemented this uh, version. So so that, the, the overall adjustments were extremely limited. I did mark up the sheet a little bit differently to to address some of the concerns last time about what was, what wasn't clear, what we're highlighting where the numbers weren't final. Um, so yes, any, any further thoughts on the budget that you, that you were stewing on over the holidays?
So I, I still don't understand where we are. I don't know where we are. I mean, I mean, this has the increases we have to do right in it, like, like the, the county taxes and health insurance and stuff like that, right? And and I don't know, but I don't know, you give these, the, where the yellow is, the change in the property taxes. But what does that mean if we don't have cash on hand or dilapidation property taxes?
That's what I said. That's why I say in my little note here, the, all the yellow boxes do not, do not mean anything and don't take them seriously. Um, until we have our final cash on hand number, we can't use any of these boxes.
Then we can't make any decisions. So when will we get those numbers?
Before our next meeting.
The next, the next meeting being the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, we will have the final year end closed out. We will also have our CRF uh, amounts amounts done from the treasurer and and the town report components from the treasurer will be done by that.
Okay, so we will be getting the final numbers and making the decisions about the budget at the same meeting.
So we do have the opportunity that, the, I, some notes on timeline that I probably should have gone to back during the town meeting section. The warning is the one thing that needs to be voted on the week of the next meeting. Um, the warning is the one thing that needs to be voted on the week of the next meeting, so the twenty seventh. Is, we, we hope to vote the warning and we hope to, to get to as close to the final ground of the budget as we can. We have, our deadline to go to the printers is not for a couple of weeks after that. So, I mean, our statutory deadline that we must have the town reports back is February twenty second. And. So that, so that means we do have another week or two after that, that meeting on the twenty seventh to finalize the budget in a timeline that gives me enough bandwidth to get it in the, the report, get the report to the printer, get the, the reports printed in back to us by that, that deadline on.
When do you realistically expect to have those numbers?
Uh, I mean, in, in time for that next meeting. I, I, the person didn't, didn't give me a good, good date in advance of that next meeting.
Couldn't do it the week before?
I can ask her in the morning.
Cause I, cause I would.
We're pushing time and I, I think.
I would wanna have, I would wanna have the numbers before the meeting and even have the numbers and have a meeting, a special meeting.
That's what I'm getting at.
Like, if you have meetings on Thursday before.
Yes.
And then meet Monday, and it would have to be a public meeting and everything like that, but, you know.
Strictly budget.
Right, because I can't make these decisions.
I, I agree with you, I think that, like, getting to the point of, of discussing a special meeting tonight was one of my goals. And I'm glad that you guys brought it up, that the idea of with MLK week being on the, being on would be a traditional meeting night.
Right.
Does throw everything off. So scheduling a special meeting for that night of the twenty, uh, fourth is what it looks like, is that, is that right? Um, yeah, twenty four, the night of twenty third.
Is that, is that, is that?
Twenty third, twenty fourth, so Friday.
Twenty third.
Is that a Thursday, is that generally possible for, for you guys?
Yes, there is, there's a meeting that night, but I can make it work.
We can meet in the.
Talking about twenty third?
Yes. Um, I will, I will.
Wouldn't that be better to do it Wednesday?
It would be better to do it on the Wednesday if we can.
Um, the question is, would we have the, the numbers?
I, I'm gonna ask the treasurer to have it.
And even if we didn't have all of them, if we had some of them, it still might be.
The, the year needs to be slowed down.
Yeah.
The, the CRF only be done.
Okay, so Wednesday, the twenty second.
What's the blocker on getting the numbers? What's been the holdup?
Uh, so the, uh, so we had to have the final, the, all the final warrants of the year done. And then the, the numbers are held up by an analysis of all due to problems and, and confirmation of, uh, a review of expenses for anything that was, uh, that was misleading. So it's reconciliation that final, ultimately. And so there, but yes, she was working on that this afternoon, she will be working on these things. If, with Robin, this is something that, that does take about a week or, or so, uh, after people get back in. So.
But some of that, some of that stuff's not gonna really affect like cash on hand, or, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Unless it does when, if there's a due to problem that, that would, that is a, something need to be moved from one place to the other. Um, but that's, the, but get, making sure these numbers are exactly right is something that is her job.
Yeah.
And, and that is something that we, that we don't wanna be doing is closing up the year and saying, oops.
Well, if we don't, if we don't have numbers before the meeting of the twenty seventh, then I think we should think about having a meeting like later that same week or, or.
We will, I will come in tomorrow and I will tell her that, 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 that we expect to have those numbers dur- even if it's during the day on the twenty second.
Well.
The point where I can up, update the numbers.
I would say that your deadline to have the numbers is either Friday, the seventh.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is the first time she's gone through this process, am I correct?
Yes, and it's absolutely.
And it is very important that these numbers be correct. Um, and I could think that we could ask for preliminary numbers, you know, but I don't think we should be putting pressure on her because the whole point is that these be accurate. But I just think that, that, um, we need to have the numbers, have time to meet about them and discuss them at a meeting before we have a meeting to make a final. So if she can't have them until the twenty seventh, we'll have to have a regular meeting, but I don't wanna be unfair.
Because this is a scheduling matter, ultimately, that, the thing that would be very reasonable would be, would be for me to come back and act, and we should have a better idea of what, of how long this is going to take within the next, by the end of this week, no, no later. So if, if we get to her last workday, Thursday afternoon, um, and I, and I check in with her on Thursday and say, okay, how far out do you think we are, are, are you at the point where we can go over this with Robin early next week?
Yeah.
Um, that would be the ideal where, but maybe that's not gonna be the case.
Yeah.
But at least we will have, I will, I will seek a timeline and update you guys on the timeline, um, and check in on this stuff on a much more frequent than I, than I check in with the treasurer on anything.
Right, if we don't wanna have some kind of error because we put.
Right.
Pressure.
And we don't wanna have, have error.
Well, I don't, I think giving two weeks to complete that, one is not unfair and two should not introduce any errors in it. That's ten business days to complete it. There is no problem with a manager tasking an employee to complete something in two weeks. And if it can't be done, then there's a whole nother story to have a discussion on altogether.
Yeah, if you can try to.
Check in, wanna check in and report back?
Check in, report back.
Yeah.
One of the things that's skewing this a little bit, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys. This is one of those years where the new year's happens in the middle of the week, so wiped out the first five days. So in those years, the sixth is the first reasonable back-to-work day, basically. And if we can get it by the twentieth and we meet the twenty second, then we may act on it the twenty seventh.
Back in.
Right.
As was I, but ultimately, I will ask, I will ask the treasurer to have.
A wire and a report back?
I will ask, I will set a goal of the seventeen and then if, I mean, a slide goal of if, of have your numbers done and then we, and we're going over this with Robin that Monday or that Tuesday, Wednesday of that week. Uh, or ideally on that Tuesday, but, but I, but I will set a goal of the seventeen and, and update if, for whatever reason, that goal is not needed.
Okay.
I prefer the term deadline than goal.
Point taken. Yeah. This opens up a whole host of other things now. Are reconciliations being then reviewed on a timely basis and cash deposits done on a timely basis? Um, I will tell you, from my standpoint, I have half of my balance sheet already reconciled for December. I haven't even done the income side yet, but half of my balance sheet at the best home is done. So if you're asking me for numbers, I can give you extremely accurate number. In fact, I'll give you an accurate number. So, um, hearing that it's taken now, you know, two weeks or, you know, a goal, um, I agree with you, Matt. It has to be done by this date. Um, but now this opens up, are reconciliations being done? Has any of you, uh, had meetings, has she, uh, come to any of the select board meetings and presented information to you folks?
Yeah.
None that I've seen since I've been back.
That, that's all we need and stuff right now on that. Um, and we can, and we can address that, uh, after the goals, after the deadline has been set and, and any, any response to that and, and failure to meet that deadline is, is handled. Um, we, I, with the first, if it were a second year even, it might be, I, I'd be a little bit more, I'd be harder on this. But in a first year, with new process without a previous person over their shoulder, uh, we do have Robin, but.
I think that, I think that if the treasurer, the town clerk, and the town administrator can work on this together and get accurate numbers and be able to certify them to the board. It doesn't matter to me if it's the seventeenth or the twenty second or the twenty seventh, as long as we get those accurate numbers in time to meet, have time to digest it, and meet and set the tax rates. Um, I, I do think it's important that this is the first year for going through the process. Um, but we need to make it very clear that the sooner we get these numbers, the better.
And that's what I, like, when I, when I chatted with her about the initial timelines, the statutory timelines, things like that.
Because that's another thing, she's not aware of this, this tremendous pressure that we're under to get this all set, so.
This, this is crunch time and she certainly is aware of that, um, she certainly has, she do, she's, I will make sure that while there are responsibilities to school as well, this, this is the, is the primary employer and our tasks do need to take precedence over, over the district's responsibilities.
But remember, remember that this is the stage of the process when the errors crack in. So we wanna make sure that we're getting the accurate numbers and that the participants can certify that they're accurate. That's the most important thing.
We don't wanna do this a bunch of ways.
Not a week here or there, yeah.
So that's, so point well taken, we will, I will, uh, meet with them in the morning and we will go from there.
Excellent, thank you.
So, uh, I think that is the last, it is, unless there's nitty-gritty stuff on the budget tonight, um, that is, that was an important piece of discussion and I, and I don't have anything else.
So as of right now, we're possibly meeting Wednesday, the twenty second, that could be subject to change, right?
Yep. You're gonna let us know on that, right?
I will, I will update you guys as I get information.
Excellent, thank you.
There, it's.
I think the preference would be really to meet on the twenty second. That way, in case we had to meet another night, the twenty third, to finalize something, if there was a question, right? Thinking back to Dan, our previous conversation, and I think the very first time when I was on the board, um, where we had like three consecutive nights so that we could make revisions and revise and actually get it done. Um, I'd like a little leeway rather than just being under the gun and have to approve something.
Yep.
Because we can't work through it.
Yeah, and this is all giving us plenty of time. The gun would be if we were, if we were waiting until the first week of February. That's, that's when you're in scary, not quickly, this is, time, scary crunch time is the following. Uh, which would, is a, is closer to the hard day.
Part of the reason she needs that one.
But this, this represents the, and the current goals and the current track that you were on with one special meeting in January and, and this timeline re- represents approximately the track that you have been on in each of the past number of years.
And we're actually in very good shape because we've settled a lot of the budget.
Yeah.
It's just the, you know, some few things that are left to go and we can't do them until we get the numbers, so we'll wait.
We're, I, I don't wanna be optimistic before we, before absolutely necessary, but, but this, but I do have some optimism in this budget season, giving her that, how far on track you guys are. So, um, so that's the only last comment I have, we will plan on that twenty second date until, um, anything changes or any updates are, are clean. So, um, and.
All right, uh, do we have an executive session?
Yes, we do, um, personnel and personnel.
And legal, so we need a, a motion to establish the reason for the executive session as a personnel and legal matter.
I make a motion that premature discussion of personnel and legal issues would cause municipality to suffer a substantial disadvantage.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to establish the reason for the executive session with the first file and legal matter. All in favor, signature by Samuel.
Aye.
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 Um, I make a further motion to actually enter into executive session for discussion of said personnel and legal issues and to allow town administrator Nick Zias to remain in the room. And, and that's all.
Aye, you guys have anything from the board and, you know, no, okay, good.
Town administrator Nick Zias to remain in the room.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to enter into executive session to set, to, uh, address said personnel and legal matters and allow town administrator Zias to remain in the room. All those in favor, signature by Samuel.
Aye.
Aye.
How are we gonna?
Hungry for Jamie.
Hungry hippo.
There's Matt. I don't know where he went, but.
Jamie's in the bathroom.
Oh, okay. We're gonna wait just a second for, uh, Jamie, he went to the restroom.
Sounds good.
We still have to do the warrants and documents.
Oh, yeah. So, I'm going to, it is, uh, it is eight fifty-three and we're back in open session. And I'm gonna skip for the moment, uh, business coming from the executive session and go right to the orders first.
Why can't we do this?
Uh, well, I'm making sure everyone is here and then one left and another game.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Anyway.
Um, so, let me just look at this, um, okay, so I make a motion to approve check warrant report number WD one, the unpaid invoices for the R T water department. The total amount, um, is seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and five cents with the largest section being, uh, health insurance payment, motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to approve check warrant report WD number one in the total amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and five cents. All those in favor, signature by Samuel.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next.
Um, first of all, uh, if I could just check with Nick, um, there's an item on the town's, the dealer credit lease premium, what's that?
That's greater.
The greater, okay. So I make a motion to approve check warrant report number one being the unpaid invoices for the general, general fund of the town of Arlington day one, three, twenty-five. Key elements are roof cross, windshield insurance premiums again, lease payment for the greater, um, firehouse, uh, seasability, engineering study, miles, fuels, fuels, diesel, heating oil, et cetera. Motion to approve the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Okay. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to approve check warrant report number one in the total amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-four cents. All those in favor, signature by Samuel.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're back to the, uh, action on the executive session.
Nick?
Yeah. Trying to get some of these things gathered, um, yes.
Okay, so, um, I make a motion to accept a grant sub-agreement pursuant to closeout of grant D R four zero two two and to authorize Chair Harvey to sign this agreement.
Second. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to, uh, authorize me to sign the closeout agreement, uh, so stated, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there any other business to be brought before the board?
Do not have any.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Jamie to adjourn and seconded by Glenn, we adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye. And for the people watching, we know, we will, we will have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty second of this month. I have that every jam, we're recording the brother tells. Good night.